Next we'll move on to D, which is rezoning of 3.49 acres at 1850 Route C. We'll ask the clerk to have a second reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 3.49 acres from PUD, Planned Unit Development, to C2, General Commercial, for land addressed as 1850 Route C, described as part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 24, Township 44 North, Range 12 West, Jefferson City, Coal County, Missouri.
Okay, Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This 3.49 acres is on Route C. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the petition to rezone this property at their meeting in November, and the motion to approve passed on a vote of eight in favor and no one against. This property is currently zoned PUD, so it's a reverse of what we see a lot of the times, but the development is progressing, and they would like to rezone this to C2, General Commercial. They're C2, General Commercial immediately adjoining the property up toward southwest Boulevard, and it makes sense at this time to rezone the property to C2 so they can progress with their development plan.
Okay, any questions of staff on 2012-115? Seeing none, we'll open up the hearing. Anyone here to speak for 2012-115? Mr. Bates.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Bates, Central Missouri Professional Services, 2500 East McCarty Street. I think initially when this property began development as a strip mall several years ago, there was concerns in regard to access, buffering, several other issues in regard to control. Subsequently, Mr. Kevin Guffey, the owner, developer, met with us and city staff and said, "Okay, we're in a situation where we think we've got some opportunities, but the PUD process is at least a 60, but more like a 90 to 120 days." The character of the development has changed substantially. As a matter of fact, the lot had some problems going back a few years ago with uncontrolled fill being placed there, erosion control. The city took the initiative a couple of years ago and said, "Developer, you've got to straighten this up with your onsite detention, moving your fill off of the church next door." So subsequent to that, the developer has really become organized. There's very limited development potential. As you look at the existing strip mall that underlays the rezoning request, there's about one acre left that's actually developable. If you drive by this, very steep fill, so they've got some severe limitations. And the way I put it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've really progressed to a point where the developer can't mess this up through the administrative process, if you understand what I'm saying. And I guess I'm trying to say that nicely since the developer is paying me to peer on his behalf here tonight. But we have exhausted the potential of doing something wrong at this point in time. The developer has reacted to the city's direction, and this, at this point, simply provides him with some flexibility at moving forward with the development plan.
All right, any questions for Mike while he's here? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of Bill 2012-115? All right, anyone to speak against 2012-115? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Questions of the council of staff? Mr. Scrivener.
Janice, I believe you told us before that the general flavor of the neighborhood, if you will, or the general zoning all around this is C2?
There's C2 on, toward the northeast. You can see there's some RA apartment zoning to the rear of this property, and then there is a lot of PUD in the vicinity. That's kind of a holdover from back when the transportation network was still being But some of the property, some of the land has been rezoned to C2. You can see catty-cornered from this property, there's some C2-zoned land there. So it makes sense, in some regards, to zone it to a traditional zoning district. Control that the PUD provides might not necessarily be needed as much as it was in the past.
The reason I asked that question, I thought I remembered asking you before as to why we would, we might move from a less restrict, or a more restrictive to a less restrictive, and you, as I recall, expressed that you didn't have concern about that because other properties in the area were C2. I guess you referenced maybe Schulte's across the street, but maybe that's the only one that...
It's still zoned PUD, but there is, where the lottery building is, it's zoned C2. And quite frankly, in 2002, when we had a major overhaul of our zoning code, a lot of site-specific and site planning requirements were added to the code that were previously, we previously had to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission to add those requirements, such as buffering and sign control and those kinds of things. So I think that our code has been refined over the years to take care of a lot of the issues that we previously had to rely on the Planning and Zoning Commission to advance for us.
Do you have absolutely no concerns about changing this zoning?
No.
Any other questions of staff on 2012-115? Seeing none, debate on 2012-115. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next we'll move on to minutes, report, minutes and reports filed here at City Hall, Animal Control Report of November, Public Works and Planning Committee of October, our Campo Meeting of September 6th, October Finance Reports, Housing Authority Board of Commissioners of October 16th, and the JCTV Steering Committee of October 25th. At this point in time, we'll move into council committee reports. First of all, the Admin Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll.
Thank you. There are several bills on tonight's agenda that came from administration, including the TIF Commission membership, traffic schedule, personnel policy changes for social media and email, the chamber contract, the facade improvement committee, and those are all on tonight's agenda, but the downtown residential parking that was discussed, we are still taking input. Britt Smith came, along with Nathan and Roger, to the Downtown Association meeting last week to present that to the association, and they will be, I think Britt is going to supply, they kind of came up with an outline of five questions to kind of ask to get input, so Britt will be supplying that to the Downtown Association, and if anyone else has input, we are in the process of gathering input as we craft that ordinance for downtown residential parking. The next meeting for administration is Wednesday, January 23rd at 8:00 a.m. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, Public Safety chaired by Mr. Pope.
No report. The next meeting will be Thursday, January the 3rd.
Thanks, sir. Public Works and Planning, Mr. Scrivener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We haven't met since our last meeting and last report, so there'll be no report tonight. Our next meeting is Thursday, January the 24th.
All right, thank you. Next we have a liaison report tonight from Mr. Henry on JCTV. Larry?
JCTV met December 6th. Primary topics of discussion were more fundraising, of course, for the station. Station manager Gloria Enlow mentioned two possible community fundraisers coming up after the first of the year. She would also, at that time, between January and early February, like to give an update to the City Council, along with other JCTV members as well. So that's where we're at with that with JCTV. We're also scheduled to actually meet twice in January, one being January 10th and the other January 24th, both at 2:00 p.m.
All right, thank you, Larry. I did forget someone here. Our Finance Committee, which is chaired by Sean Schulte. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee has not met since the last council meeting. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January 22nd, 7:30 a.m. across the hall. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sean. Any other liaison reports we may have missed earlier? Carrie?
Adding on to the JCTV report, I know that now they have individual memberships, and I just keep forgetting I need to join myself, and I would just ask that the rest of the council would consider joining.
Great.
Perhaps if you need to get a Christmas present for somebody, that might be a good thing to have an individual membership to support JCTV, so anyone in the public can join as well. And I am not exactly sure, I can't remember how to, Gloria has that information, or if it's on the city's website? Is that right, Michelle? There are actually brochures explaining all of that outside this room, so people can learn more about that.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, number nine, appointments by the mayor. We have Parks and Rec Commission, we've had a vacancy there, and Darrell Winiger is being brought up for a partial term to expire on May 2013. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, Sean, and then Bob. Discussion, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next we'll move into, no one under number 12, correct clerk? We'll move into the consent agenda. At this point in time, we have, we have five items on there. At this point in time, we would entertain a motion to approve all five at one time unless someone would have a problem with that.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded by Lubert. Discussion, discussion from staff on any item. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
And for the record, Bob had to leave. Bob obviously works for the school board, and they had a big meeting tonight that he had to attend, so he gets an excused absence, so to speak. Obviously, that passed. Next we'll move on to bids over $50,000. First of all, bid 2644 for the fire department. Terry in chief.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the conclusion of the air pack renovation that we started several months ago. This will include a new air compressor cascade system that'll allow us to go ahead and continue with the high-pressure air supply.
Okay, any questions, Chief? All right, seeing none, any debate on this by council? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk still, we need a motion first.
So moved.
Blame it on the coal medicine, it's easy time to do this time of year. Been brought up by Schulte and seconded by Mahalovich. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion passes. Now we'll move on to bills introduced, 2012-118, first reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2012-2013 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, by appropriating additional funds from the general fund to the city clerk elections fund.
Okay, Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would appropriate $40,000 from the reserve. The council budgeted $32,000 for elections as it has in previous years. The November election involved the presidency was phenomenally expensive from our end, it was $44,000, so we don't actually have enough to pay for that yet. We've also got a certainty of a March now and April election, and potentially August and November, so we need some more money for those elections, so we're asking for $40,000 for that.
Any questions, Drew? Bob?
Drew, was there something other than a large turnout that affected our share of the cost? Was there another political entity perhaps that wasn't participating, or is it just a matter of a large turnout?
It was a large turnout. It's $2.00 some cents per vote is what it ends up costing us, and it was just that big a turnout.
And that's, that's pretty much what we pay every time there's an election.
I believe, well, I'd have to defer to Phil on that one, actually.
It was a large turnout, plus it was a long ballot. There were several candidates and several issues, so they had to print several pages of the ballot.
It was a costly.
Right, right.
It's a costly ballot, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, any other questions of staff or debate on 118? Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, sorry, that's just introduced. Moving on, first reading of 119.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the Personnel Policy Manual Regarding the Use of Email and Social Media.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the big topics in employment law is social media. The, there have been a number of cases throughout the country regarding this issue, and it's basically well suggested that we go ahead and adopt a social media policy. So that is one part of what this bill does. It would prohibit employees from making inappropriate postings on private social media. Those type of prohibitions would include threats of violence, obscene material, and misrepresentations by the city. In addition, we'd like to revise the citywide email policy, which currently prohibits any emails for any type of commercial use whatsoever, or any non-city business, and give a nod, I guess, to the modern employee and allow de minimis use of email, which we allow de minimis use of computers. We would prohibit the use of any group email set up by IT, including all city users for that purpose. If there's someone you know that wants to, may be interested in buying some small item, you can send it to them. You cannot use the all-city users, and that certainly does happen occasionally, so that's a thing we particularly want to stop. And in addition, or finally, this policy would apply the fire department's policy on picture-taking on duty to the citywide. An issue came out after 9/11 about a picture taken by a firefighter on staff, turned into a major lawsuit. So basically, we want to tell employees, there's no picture-taking while you're on duty of any crime scenes and stuff like that, and if you do, it's the property of the city. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 119? All right, moving on, and we'll have first reading of 2012-120.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the code to remove Code Section Reference in Traffic Schedules.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is what I would call a bill that doesn't have much real impact, but makes it easier on the record-keepers. The code itself says that left-turn lanes are followed, as provided in the code, in some section, and then you refer to the traffic schedules to find out what specific locations are prohibited. And in the traffic schedule, for example, in speed limits, it says pursuant to Section 19103, the following speed limits are imposed on the following streets. In order to avoid potential problems when we amend one part of the code and not the other, this bill would just take out the code reference that's found in the traffic schedules themselves, so it doesn't have any real impact. The code still cites that left turns are prohibited. The traffic schedules still tell you where it is, it's just a grammar issue, I think, or a Scrivenering issue.
Okay. Wonder what they used to call them, Bob? Any other questions on 120? All right, next we'll have first reading of 121.
An ordinance amending Sections 7-271 Membership and 7-272 Term of Membership of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the Tax Increment Financing Commission.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had an early, we had a public hearing on the TIF, and it came about in part because of our review of the TIF ordinance. The TIF ordinance membership changed at state level, so we need to change ours at the city level. Instead of a nine-member board, we'll now have 11 members, six of which are appointed by the city, and we're just updating the code to keep current.
Any questions for Drew on 121? Okay, moving on, thank you, Drew. 122, that was already removed. 123, first reading, or excuse me, yeah, first reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an easement for the benefit of Gary W. Poff and Kathleen C. Poff.
Mr. Scrivener, I see a check mark next to this one.
Yes, I would like to suspend the rules and vote on that tonight.
Okay, is there any objection of more than two council members? Seeing none, the rules will officially be suspended on 123. Second reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an easement for the benefit of Gary W. Poff and Kathleen C. Poff.
Okay, Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a commercial building here on Veterans Lane that is in the process of being sold. Ryback Supply would like to purchase that building, and during the survey, it was discovered that the building is actually sitting on city right-of-way by about two inches. So what they would like to do to resolve this, so they could close on that sale, is to have the city provide an easement for that building to sit on, about six inches wide, and that is, is what is being drafted and recommended here this evening.
Any questions of the council of staff? Seeing none, any council debate? Roll call, please.
Lubert?
Did we third read that? I thought we only said...
Oh, sorry.
Then I'll show up. You did. Phil said we did.
Okay. I called it second, I think it was third, so. Roll call, please.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
And motion passes, and I think there's someone in the audience tonight that was needing that for a closing, and just to show you that government can work on time, you'll have that tonight. All right, next, we'll have first reading of 124.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services.
Roger. Oh, I'm sorry, Drew, my bad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was time again to renew the chamber contract, however, it came right on the heels of the CVB contract, and so we decided we would modify that. Tim put some metrics to allow the council, and frankly, the public, to judge whether it's successful or not. We worked with the chamber staff, and we proposed some metrics, they proposed some back, the administration committee debated them, and in the end, the metrics are whatever you say they are, because they're your contractor. What ended up happening is that we divided the, divided the metrics into the actual services with the names that they use today, general economic development, business attraction, business retention expansion, community development, industrial assets management. I'm happy to go into more detail, if you'd like, on specifically what they are. In addition, we tweaked the renewal term, so that if we're a little bit late, the contract just continues, and I believe that is most, all of the changes that we'd proposed. I guess I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll go into further detail if you'd like me to.
Any questions of the council of 124 for Jerry? Rick?
Do we have any other contracts that are coming due that these metrics would apply to?
We always have contracts coming due. The ones that these would be specifically attributable to, I can't think off the top of my head, but the ones I think you'd certainly be interested in are the recurring types of professional services, as opposed to the simple contracts, which we value by whether or not they built, what we ask them to build in a reasonable way. We'll keep our eyes out on it, though.
Get your work on that.
Do you have a question, Bob? Anyone else on 124, just first reading tonight? Okay, let's see, moving on, we'll have first reading of 2012-125.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to membership of facade improvement committee.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. The effect of this ordinance would be to move the facade committee that was created by ordinance 13963 and codified in Chapter 17, the facade improvement section, and move that to a new section in Chapter 7, which is a chapter that contains all of the boards and commissions. By doing that, it would allow the members to be appointed and reappointed in the same fashion that other boards and commission members are appointed and reappointed.
Okay, thank you, Janice. Any questions on 125 from the council of staff? Bob?
Janice, I've never, I mean, till this subject came up, I wasn't aware that we had facade committee. Are there currently members of that committee?
Yes, there are.
And, and they are appointed now? How are they appointed now? What's the process now?
I'm not sure I can answer that question. But they're operating as an ad hoc committee, I would assume. But, but they have, there have been a group of people that review the applications for facade improvements and have made recommendations, and obviously, there've been a number of facades that have been improved downtown, so their, their work is apparent, but we would like to make that an official committee that, where we can replace the members as we need to.
And they would continue to serve, then? I presume that this change is creating terms of service of one, two, and three years, just like, just like we have now?
Right. I did ask that the current members submit their volunteer profile form to Gale Strop, just like all the other board and commission members do, and so I'm assuming most of them have submitted their, their profiles.
And then they'd be reappointed in all likelihood?
Right.
Carrie?
Thank you. I believe it might have been Ralph had sent an email about asking if Historic Preservation Commission could have a role in this as well, and I know that's something that didn't come up at administration, but I do see that side of it, too. The current committee has done a fantastic job at what they've done, this just makes it more official, so I don't know if there's ever a need for more information, if they would want to go to Historic Preservation for more detail on the property, or if we would want to, I don't know how we would tie the two together, or if they need to be, but it was just an interesting point that Ralph brought up, and I see where that's coming from, because most of these buildings do have a historic aspect. They don't necessarily have to be historically accurate, it's not like some of the state tax credits where they have different guidelines. This is, the guidelines are a little bit different, but there is that historic component. So before we vote on it, I just remember that communication coming out, and I don't know if you had any changes to suggest before we get, if you do, maybe before we get to the next meeting, we could talk to Janice and see if anything needs to come up about that. Thank you.
Ralph?
Yeah, I would be interested to follow up in conversation to see if we need another commission, or if Historic Preservation Commission, with all their responsibilities and duties they already have, if this might just be another one of them. So I would enjoy conversation sometime to, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, but it almost looks like a duplication of services here.
Okay. Any other comments on 125? Okay, moving on, we'll have first reading of 126, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, requiring markers for new graves in Longview Cemetery, and amending the fee for a cemetery lot.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This amends Chapter 10 pertaining to cemeteries. Currently, the city's only active cemetery is Longview, and there's no requirement for permanent markers or gravestones. The Cemetery Board recently recommended that new burials at Longview be required to include a gravestone. Small gravestones are available from the monument companies at a modest cost, and additionally, the Cemetery Board recommended that the fees for grave sites be increased from $200 to $400, and that's also included as a provision in this ordinance. Public Works and Planning Committee considered these at their meeting on November 29th.
Okay, any questions of staff on 126? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to 127, first reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the voluntary annexation of real property contiguous to the present city limits into the city of Jefferson, Missouri, located at 2239 and 2243 Ridge Road, described as lots 28, 29, and part of Lot 30, Longview subdivision, in the county of Coal, state of Missouri, and amending Section 1-17 of the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, defining the existing city boundary by adding one new subsection pertaining to the same subject.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance amends our city boundary and annexes properties at 2239 Ridge Road and 2243 Ridge Road, and applies the RS3 zoning designation. Both of these property owners petitioned for annexation so that they can connect to the city sewer system. They currently have onsite waste disposal systems, septic systems, that are failing. And in this situation, both of these properties are immediately adjacent to Covington Gardens subdivision in the southwest portion of the city, and the sanitary sewer main runs along the back. to the sewer will be quite easy to do. Here's a little close-up of that particular area. Covington Gardens is zoned RS-three, and we would ask that RS-three be applied to these two lots as well. Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, recommended this zoning plan at their meeting last week on December thirteenth, and their minutes were transferred to you electronically last week as well. The public hearing on the voluntary annexation is scheduled for January seventh, um, at six PM.
Any questions of, uh, staff on 127? Mr. Lubert?
From the, uh, photograph, uh, that's on the board, there, there seems to be other houses on Ridge Road and Oak Lane which are similarly adjacent to the city. How do they acquire sewer service?
Currently, those are all on, onsite systems, septic, so, uh, some of them are, are failing. We would expect that over time, we would have some additional petitions for annexation from that neighborhood.
So the other residents in that area know of, of the availability of city service?
Yes, they do.
And it says these two have picked up on it and, and, uh, decided to go with the city?
Yes. Their, their systems are failing. It's pretty obvious they're failing, so they were in, in a situation where they needed to, needed to connect to the system.
Okay. Bob?
Does, does there, uh, does, will the city incur any cost or minimal cost, or what, what, what's the city's cost?
Uh, because the main is, uh, just at the, at the back of those lots in Covington Gardens, the, it'll be easy for the property owners to pay for the extension, and they've already made contact with, uh, with a, um, company to extend those.
No doubt it'll cost them less to connect than it will to, uh?
Yes, it will cost them less than.
Repair.
Building a new, um, septic system, plus a, a septic system is not allowed in that type of situation.
Dr. Pope?
So these are both gravity feeds?
Yes.
And secondly, do we have in our code, when we have a voluntary annexation and they're hooking onto the sewer, do we have anything in the code to remediate the failing septic system? Are they required to do anything when they come into the city with the failed system?
Well, I would assume that the system would be, it'll be pumped out and, and filled in and that sort of thing, and then?
It'll be filled in, but is that the requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on 127? All right, seeing none, we'll have first reading of 128.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Missouri American Water Company for the sale of lot six, section two of the Cherry Creek subdivision.
Mr. Scrivener, I see another check mark here, sir.
Yes, uh, they need to complete that sale before the end of the year, so I would ask that the rules be suspended on 128, and we vote tonight.
All right, there again, I'd ask if, is there any, um, conflict between council members to suspending the rules this evening? Seeing none, the rules will now be suspended. We'll have third reading of 2012-128.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Missouri American Water Company for the sale of lot six, section two of the Cherry Creek subdivision.
Drew, before you give your explanation, could you please give the audience a quick rundown on why we just had first reading, and then went right to third reading, please?
Sure. Uh, the city code and the charter both require, uh, a bill to be read three times. Uh, in an odd quirk that I've never quite figured out, we've determined that by handing out, uh, the, the paper document to all of you or the electronic document, that counts as our first reading. We then, when we sit here today, uh, Phyllis had read it, this, she read it the first time, but it counts as the second reading. Uh, in, in the general course of business, you would only have those first two readings at your first meeting, uh, and allow then the next two weeks to be, allow for comment by, by the public or, or thought by the council, and then at the next public meeting, we read it a third time, which is actually Phyllis, uh, physically reading it, reading the bill title aloud again. On occasion, there is, there is reason to, uh, not allow that extra two weeks. There's, uh, as in tonight, you've seen, already seen one, and then I'll explain why they need it, or I think the mayor already did, or, or Bob did. Uh, that sometimes we, we suspend those rules, and the code has flexi, the code and charter have flexibility, flexibility, and they allow that.
All right, thanks, sir. Go ahead.
Very good. So this is the, the, the city some years ago purchased this property out of Cherry Creek, uh, uh, for, for a couple purposes. One was for a new fire station, which we're, we're on our way to doing. Uh, secondly, uh, at the time, we purchased it, we were in discussions with the water tower about whether they could utilize a portion of that for a water tower. Uh, the per, the original purchase, uh, the agreement at that time was always that the, uh, water company would pay the same per-square footage that we paid, and, uh, that we're now ready to do that, uh, which is fortuitous for us, because we're also ready to build our fire station. Uh, all of the plans have been laid out, and the, uh, easements are ready to go. Uh, the water company has, uh, contacted us just, uh, oh, two or three weeks ago, said they really wanted to get this done now. Uh, they've got their money available, and everything's ready to go, and they want it done by the beginning of the year, uh, before the beginning of the year, so they can spend the money, and they're ready to start on a, on their water tower, which will be, uh, one and a half million gallon water tower, which they'll begin in construction next year, which is one of our goals when we started this, was to get more above-ground, uh, water storage, so. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Any questions of Drew? Any debate by council? Mr. Lubert?
What is the disposition of the accounting for the dollars that we get?
The, uh, uh, where will the money go and what will it do?
Yes.
Uh, I might have to ask, well, Sheila's not here. The, what the money's going to be used for is the, is the fire station itself. That was all part of the plan. I'm not sure into what account it goes. Nathan might have to, looks like he might know.
I'm sure I don't know what account it goes in. Um, probably one eighty-five, that's what they all seem to go into. Um, but it is used to, for the fire station. It's part of our budgeting for that.
It's actually kind of part of the plan. I'll ask Dr. Pope, or maybe Bob, I remember. Wasn't that part of the plan when we decided to sell the land, that we knew, oh, whatever, whatever was going in towards that tower would definitely go towards the station, indoor public safety, if I remember correctly?
Uh, that's my recollection of it. Um, I, uh?
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let's see here. Any other debate on 128 or questions? Seeing no questions, debate. All right, roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move into bills pending. We'll have, uh, second reading of 2012-116.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Loggie Ridge subdivision, section one, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Janice?
Thank you, Mayor. There is a substitute bill in the packet that I would like to call your attention to. Um, this final subdivision plat of Loggie Ridge subdivision, section one, is located on Missouri Route C and Vith Drive. There we go. Uh, section one is noted on, um, the west side of the property. It's a little hard to read, but this is a preliminary plat. Section one, again, is in this vicinity, and the substitute proposes a change in the lot line between lots twenty-four and lots twenty-five. It's a slight change, but, um, by approving a substitute at this time, it, it does save the, the developer some time and money later on, and this is the, the revised plat, um, showing the change between lots twenty-four and twenty-five. The Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, approved section one at their, uh, meeting on November eighth. The, um, proposal, uh, to change the lot line between lots twenty-four and twenty-five came later, obviously, but, um, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the, uh, plat be approved. Um, all of the infrastructure will be provided in the subdivision, including sidewalks. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, at this point in time, we will entertain a motion to accept the substitute as printed.
I move the substitute, uh, be considered as in your packet, shown in your packet.
Is there a second? Uh, moved and seconded, discussion. Uh, seeing none, uh, voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll now, uh, debate, uh, 2012-16, 116 as substituted. Who had the first question? I'm sorry. Over here, to my left. Questions of staff? Debate? I have one question. Janice, hopefully you could tell me this. Um, total homes in the, in the total development, phase one and two, roughly how many lots?
There's twenty-nine in section one. I don't know if I wrote down the number in the preliminary. Mr. Loggie could answer that question quickly, though.
Fifty-six total, okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Loggie. Okay, um, no debate? Uh, roll call, please.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to third reading of 2012-117.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending section nineteen four oh one, Schedule J, parking prohibited, subparagraph A, Streets and Highways of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to June Court and Wyatt Court located in Loggie Ridge subdivision, section one.
Janice?
Thank you. Um, this bill is companion to the previous bill, uh, Loggie Ridge subdivision, section one. Um, if this bill is approved, this regulates the on-street parking, uh, in this section. June Court, parking would be prohibited on the north side. Uh, sidewalk and parking would be constructed on the south side of this street, and on Wyatt Court, parking would be prohibited on the west side.
Okay. Uh, questions of staff on, uh, 117? Debate? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the informal calendar and bill 2012-dash-eighty-seven. Mr. Scrivener, I show you here is the sponsor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's my intention to leave the bill on the informal calendar.
That bill remet, will remain on tonight's informal calendar and virtually dies there. Next, we'll have, uh, resolutions. Actually, we've already done the high street thing. Uh, any presentations from the gallery clerk? Seeing none. Uh, council staff discussion on presentation topics earlier? Uh, any new business for, for the, uh, organization tonight? Un, any unfinished business? Uh, scheduled reports. I do have one quick comment tonight. Uh, doing the quick math, and this is strummed math, so you have to be kind of careful on how this turns out, but roughly with what we did on both developments tonight, that's nineteen million dollars worth of future homes to be built in our city, and doing a rollover factor of five, that's ninety million dollars to our local economy. And with that, I wish you all a Merry Christmas. We'll entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Oh, roll call?
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.